I'd like to welcome everyone to our August 13, 2020, virtual meeting of the St. Cloud City Council. Again, we hope that anyone that might be watching online, that you and your families are staying safe and healthy. Tonight's council meeting is being conducted using communications media technology as authorized by executive order of the governor during this current pandemic. We appreciate your patience and assure you that your city council remains committed to providing the public affair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We sincerely appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. To tonight's meeting participants, as the presiding officer requests the following. One, that each council member or designated staff member request that they be recognized by me before speaking. I'll do my best to quickly recognize and call upon you. Two, all participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak, and of course, while you are speaking. Three, please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public, and therefore, we request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. Four, prior to the council taking final action on any agenda item, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants or members of the public who have pre-registered to address the specific agenda item through communications media technology will be recognized to address the council. And email or written statements that have been timed and submitted will be read into the record. The normal rules I have stated earlier regarding public comments still apply. Thank you for your cooperation and efforts to ensure this council meeting is conducted in the best interest of the city of St. Cloud. With that, I call this meeting to order. We will have our invocation by Pastor David Nye, pastor of the Christ Our Savior Fellowship Church, after which, if we could all stand now, we will have our pledge of allegiance following the invocation. Pastor Nye, it's good to have you here.
Let us pray. From the word of God, Romans, Chapter 13, verse one and two. "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God; and authorities that exist are appointed by God. Therefore, whoever resists the authority resists the ordinance of God; and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves." Father, we pray this evening for these council members, who will meet tonight to discuss, debate, and decide issues that affect the citizens of our city. I pray you give each member an open mind, and may each member also realize that he or she will be held accountable to you for their actions because of the authority that you, Lord, have given them. We thank you for all the blessings you have given our city, our state, our nation, and we pray for your continued blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny? Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Hit the wrong button. At this time, we'll have a presentation by EVOC regarding our city rebranding.
Mr. Mayor, this is Marianna Batshelder. May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. We have with us this evening two representatives from EVOC advertising. We have Allison Parker and Bradley. The results of the work that's been done so far on our rebranding initiative. At the end of this, they're going to be presenting you with three pillars on which we hope to build our new brand moving forward for the city, and we'll be seeking your endorsement to move forward with that at the end of this presentation. Thank you.
Is that my introduction to begin, Marianna?
Bradley, that's you. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for allowing us this time to come before you and present this document, which we've been working on for several months, and because of everything that's occurred, it's been with us a lot longer than we had hoped, but we are now here this evening and looking forward to share this with you. This is the culmination of a discovery process that is attached to a branding initiative for your fine city, St. Cloud. And so what I'm going to be taking you through over the next half an hour to forty minutes is basically the findings that will lead us to some insights, which will then culminate in a strategic recommendation that we hope that you'll embrace and allow us to continue moving forward. So just in quick terms, if I can get this to advance for me. There with me. There we go. So this is basically what we're going to be talking about. We held a full-day discovery session with a determined group of leadership and some business leaders, some civic leaders, and we convened that in St. Cloud. This is back several months ago, actually. And we went through what we call an invoke session, which is basically a creative brainstorming session. And then later that evening, we had a group of residents that were also selected for us that were, I determined a representative sampling of your community, and we had a two-hour session with them as well, which was kind of an informal focus group, if you will. In addition to that, we've done some research online. We've done some discovery work. We've also done a little bit of competitive analysis, and we're going to pull that all together for you this evening and just share this with you. Before I actually get into the findings, I want to just kind of set the table for what we're going to be sharing with you. This is not a creative presentation, so you're not going to be seeing new logos quite yet. We're not going to be sharing with you taglines. There won't be wow, exciting advertising. You could argue that this is going to be rather dry because it is a strategic document. However, it's a very important document because if you're doing your brand work correctly, you want to make sure that you're taking inputs from all of the individuals that matter inside of your community and forming a platform. So think of what you're seeing this evening as the foundation and a little bit of the architecture upon which all of the rest of the brand will get built. Your visual identity, your slogans, your advertising campaigns, the way you talk about yourself to the outside world, and amongst yourselves will be built upon this platform that we're going to be sharing with you. So the ask at the end of this is going to be permission to embrace this position, this strategy, to move forward, okay? I just don't want you to be underwhelmed because it's not as creative as you might think. It's much more strategic. But on the other hand, we also think it's pretty interesting, and we like where we've landed. So you're probably going to hear that passion in my voice. What we're trying to do overall, the big picture at the 30,000-foot level, is we want to make sure that we're clearly communicating and answering this question. Why should people consider St. Cloud for whatever reason? If they're a future resident, an existing resident, a business, whatever it is, why should they consider us? What is it about this community that makes you different? How do we signal our uniqueness? And then how do we talk to the community, and more importantly, what does the world want to hear from us? That's kind of the big picture that we're doing here. Another little bit of a primer, because when you brand a destination or when you brand a community, it's a little bit of a different kettle of fish. It's not like conventional brand undertaking. This is not a bar of soap where we can control the flavor and the ingredients, or this is not a marketing service where we can adjust our pricing. None of the normal tools that are available to a destination for branding are available to you, and that can be confounding. There's several things that present obstacles, okay? A community cannot be sampled or tasted or tested. It can't be returned. Okay, very often, if things don't go well for somebody, that's the name of the game, and you just have to live with it, okay? So there's a lot of variables that take place when you're branding a community that are literally outside of your control. So it's not for the faint of heart that we go into these exercises. You have to take into consideration some of these facts. You know, oftentimes, people get into a branding project and they think that an ad agency is going to go off up into an ivory tower and then come down with wings of fire and just share with you the results, and it's just not like that. Really, what a strong community brand is built upon are the shared values of a community, and that's really what we were mining for. We're looking at what is the common denominator that makes St. Cloud a really cool place to live and do business, and how can we actually encapsulate that so that we can build our programming? So that's just a little bit of a word to the wise, because sometimes people also get frustrated. They're like, why can't we do this and why can't we do that? Because we're limited in what's within our control, okay? This is not conventional branding. I just want to put that out there because these are thoughts that come into people's minds as these projects begin to unfold. Nonetheless, we prosecute a brand identity program for a community in the same way we would if we were working with a Procter and Gamble, or if we were working with a country. You know, we put you through the same paces that we put the country of Honduras through, okay? So the same level of rigor. We did an internal analysis. We went outside to the external world to take a worldview. We audited all of your existing communications assets, and we've distilled it down to get to the results. So the process and the discipline is very much the same, so you're getting full scrutiny. So with those caveats, let's dive right in and look at some of the top-line findings. By the way, one other thing, there's a work product report that accompanies this, which is vast. It's far more comprehensive than the information that we're sharing with you. And if you're a data nerd or you really like getting into these things, that document is available to you, and you can go deeper into it if you want. What you're seeing today are basically top lines, and based upon the invoke session, you know, we asked people, you know, who are you? What is this all about? In the civic group, we heard things such as a progressive city, someone that's rapidly growing, becoming more diverse, becoming more modern. There was some sentiment out there. Not all of it is a walk in the park. There's some trepidation about what's going on. A lot of people would really kind of like put the blinders on, kind of not have anything happen, and pretend that everything is the way it was and is never going to change. So there's a little bit of that out there, and that came out fully when we interviewed these groups as well. So these are some of the top-line sentiments that we heard with that group. And then similarly, when we had a separate session with the business leaders, everybody very vocal, by the way, they had a different set of concerns, you know? The notion that there may be an identity crisis going on within the community of St. Cloud, that maybe there isn't a clear vision, or if there is a clear vision, maybe it needs to be better distilled or better articulated. So there's a little bit of that going on. And of course, when you look at what is of interest to civic leaders, what are some of their interests? And then you look at some of the interests of business leaders, they don't always align completely. There's different motivations, so you're going to have differences, and that's why we talk to different people, all right? But we also heard things like, once a small town, maybe it's growing too large. These are some of the top-line things that came out. And then, you know, why would anybody care about us? And civic leaders volunteered. They were very healthy in their response here. A lot of people cited the location, and that becomes something that's very interesting, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later. The idea that you've never actually really embraced a serious branding program in the past, so therefore, how we position ourselves as a brand and how we talk about ourselves to the community is a wide-open canvas. That's a very positive thing. There was a lot of sentiment and emotion around what a beautiful place it is and the fact that there's a lot of open area and a lot of nature. And I happen to be right across from you folks. I'm right over in Orlando. I've been in Orlando now for 22 years, and I've seen just unbelievable developments since when I moved down here in 1998. So there's some lessons to be learned on what we should and shouldn't do as we go forward with St. Cloud and as inevitability growth comes in, you know, protecting that. Lots of positive feedback around the community feel and the notion that it's a great place for families. People that have lived in St. Cloud are very proud of the fact that they live in St. Cloud. That was very refreshing to hear, okay? So these are some of the things that we're mining for. Some of the things that came out of the community, out of the business community, that may be a little bit of control over developments. They love the fact that it's quiet and calm and urban, but they're really interested in, you know, where's the master plan for growth? Those are some of the things that came out on that end. And then when we queried on what makes us unique and what makes us different, which by the way is one of the key pillars of a brand, is the perception that you're not quite like anyplace else. So this becomes an important question. And again, now you start to see some similarity, which is interesting. The advocacy of wildlife and the fact that there's an agricultural story underneath this as part of the history is all very important, and we should not lose sight of that because that's unique. And in efforts to grow, sometimes really cool parts of your heritage can be paved over if we're not careful. So that was definitely something that came out. Again, we heard over and over and over again from all the different groups, the sense of community and the notion that there's serenity here, that there's a small-town feel. And we also learned that that word "small-town" is a trigger, so we'll talk about more about that later, too, okay? We took those findings and we basically began to cluster them. This is what we call a conventional SWOT analysis, which basically is the fancy business term for what's good and what's not. What are the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats? So we try to cluster these things because really what we're trying to do is we're trying to take, think of this process as a huge funneling down, a filtration of a lot of things, trying to get it down to something that's much more simple, all right? And so this does this for us. Some of the things that were played to us as very strong about your area, the family-friendliness, the great educational resources, you can see them. They're right here on query. Really good stuff. When you have destinations that are adjacent to larger cities that are more rural, sometimes there's deficiencies on things like education. We're not getting that here. So we're hearing very, very interesting strengths of this community, and from a brand perspective, things that we can begin to really hang our hat on. Some of the areas of weaknesses, and this is always a delicate conversation, but it has to be pointed out, otherwise we can't do our work. There's a little bit of a sense of a miscommunication that may be occurring between the civic leadership and the business leadership, and even more so perhaps between the folks that are entrusted to run the community and the people that actually live in the community, okay? So we definitely picked up some dissidents about internal communication up and down the chain. Interestingly enough, that type of a problem is not uncommon in communities. You know, there's always this sense among community members, like, what has leadership, what has the mayor done for us lately? What has the council done for us lately? You know, they think that way. They don't often see the hard work that goes on behind the scenes, if you will. So there is a sentiment that can set in. But the point of the matter is, whether it's real or whether it's not real, if it's a perception, guess what? It's real. So here's the good news. If we can land on a positioning platform that really kind of signals what matters to all of the different shareholders, that can also serve as a rallying cry to start bringing everybody together and get everybody on one voice. So when we hear this and when we see what we're learning, we realize that we have a pretty good undertaking here and a pretty good opportunity. The brand can actually be a uniter if we allow it to be. Again, some of these opportunities, a lot of what's happening over in Lake Nona can easily spill over to us from a perceptual point of view. You know, just because it's not in St. Cloud doesn't mean it's not part of a greater region, and so you can always borrow from things that are positive to help enhance your brand. So these are some opportunities. Again, we've heard a number of times how lovely you are and where you are, and you're near everything. It's fantastic that we have a major interstate that runs right through St. Cloud. And over time, that's going to be a huge plus, especially for development, okay? Access, you know, and also the fact that you're really close to a major international airport. You're really close to what's, everything that's happening out at Cape Canaveral and Spaceport, right? If you start looking at, you know, you can even make the joke that you could probably make a credible argument that over time, St. Cloud is going to be the center of Florida's universe. Because as things begin to happen, you're going to actually become center. Central Florida is going to shift away from Orlando and closer to you folks, and that's something we want to pay attention to because from a brand point of view, we can grab a lot of equity with that perception. We can literally shift perception closer to making St. Cloud in the middle of things in terms of perception. So that's an important opportunity. And then, of course, you know, interestingly enough, it's a double-edged sword. Sometimes things that are happening around you that are opportunities are also threats. You want to make certain that you don't get overwhelmed by things that are happening out with all the medical community in Lake Nona, and you just don't want to be overshadowed by these things. But these are also some of the things that we want to be careful of, and we keep this. We keep this close to us, and we refer back to it as we go forward, as we begin building this brand out, and we begin introducing it into the community, and then we let it go out into the outside world. You know, we keep this document, and we make sure that we're staying on course. That's the beauty of this work product. This is not a one-and-done. This literally becomes almost like an owner's manual on how we're going to do things going forward from a brand and a perception standpoint, okay? So this is kind of an interesting clustering analysis. And so that's a bucket of information, and it's very important to us. And then, like I had said earlier, that evening, we convened an informal focus group with a representative sampling of folks that live in the community. And this was a good session, and I'm so glad that we did it because these people came, and I'm telling you right now, they were not wallflowers, okay? They let us have it with everything that they were thinking, and it was good because we got a lot out of this. This is just a sampling of some of the quotes. It's interesting because they're passionately interested in what's happening in their town, and they want to be a voice. They want to be a part of it. And we probably could have gone on for another two hours with these folks. They had so much to say, and it was all very rich and nutritious, and we've captured it, and it's a key ingredient that we're going to use. And the folks that helped us coordinate this were really smart. They brought some teenagers to the table, too. And these teenagers were really vocal on what role they want to play, and that's an important part of a community. You know, we oftentimes think about ourselves as the adults, and the kids will figure it out, but that's not true at all. You know, if we're going to be a strong brand and we're going to be inclusive, we should listen to the young people because they represent the future. And some of the things that they have on their mind are really progressive and really intelligent. And I was glad because they sat there at the table with us, and they really stood up, and they talked about it. So, you know, some of the things that they're looking at, again, this is that communication issue, okay? And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but this is something that we want to make sure that we get better at because it's going to be important when it comes to conveying the brand as we go forward. Another verbatim, you know, they want to make sure that they don't lose that small town, so, you know, we want to make sure that the development is done in a thoughtful manner. And again, we can use this brand platform as a roadmap. If we believe this brand represents our core values, then that will determine who we partner with in development and what kind of communities get built, and what kind of businesses we want to attract to be a part of the St. Cloud experience. We use this as not just a, you know, a marketing document. We use it as a life document, okay? So these are some of the quotes that kind of add a little bit of texture to everything that we were just talking about. Slow down, we're going too fast. We hear this everywhere, all the time, no matter what the destination is, okay? So more just quick quotes. I'll let you just absorb this because they're kind of verbatims and they speak for themselves. But my takeaway was, I love it when people come and they have opinions, all right? Because even if they're coming at it with a negative opinion, underneath that negative opinion, they're doing that because they care, okay? They didn't give up their time to come and talk to us because they don't have anything better to do. They did it because they really care about St. Cloud, and they want it to be the best place in the world because they believe in it, okay? So when you hear negative sentiment, when you see things happening on social media that could be perceived as negative, and sometimes it's, you know, it's rough, just know that underneath that are people that really love this place, and they're afraid. And when they're afraid, people get angry, you know? We know that dynamic. So I look at all this as, if they didn't care, you wouldn't hear boo, okay? So that's another way of looking at this, and I don't think I'm shining the apple. So anyway, some of the key takeaways here that we want to make sure that we understand is we want to get that message. We want to make sure that we convey back, okay, at all times, that this is a reflection of what they've told us. Let's build that bridge, and let's keep that bridge because this is what that is. Again, it's not just the ad agency going off into the tower. We are now creating feedback loops, and this is a part of it right here. And then that there's a willingness to make this thing happen and work closely. This is very important for us as we go to the next step. Hang on with me one second. And again, we want to make sure that everyone understands and believes that this is meaningful, okay? And that this is going to happen. This is very important for us. So with all of that information and some of the other information that I'm going to share with you right now, we saw basically three threads that ran through everything with advocacy and with passion and with consistency and with strength. The motivations might have been different, but what mattered was the same. The sense of community, the sense of shared experience, that's number one. The location, and location can be a huge brand differentiator. You can build a solid brand if you have a really good location story, all right? And then the idea that you have all of this natural beauty. So these are the three major themes that really kind of set the backdrop. And then I'm using this one slide, not to overwhelm you, but just to remind you that we're not the only community in Florida. There are a bunch. And they all invest in their brands, and they're all very, very serious. So you could call this competitive landscape daunting, all right? So if little St. Cloud wants to be in there and wants to gain share of mind, we're going to have to be really strategic and we're going to have to be really smart because we're never going to be able to outspend most of these destinations. Some of these destinations have things that we will never have, okay, like the keys, all right? However, we can get into this space, and we can own a lot of it if we stay focused and we're strategic. And I put that up there for no other reason but to remind you that we're not doing this in a vacuum. Now, the second part of the equation, and I'm moving along at a pretty good clip. I just want to let everybody know that at this pace, I'll probably be done in about another 15 minutes, so please hang with me, okay? I know this might be dry for some people. But in order to pull this thing together, we also need to understand a little bit about what motivates people, okay? Because strong brands, at the end of the day, are really the connective tissue between your community's reason for being and people's reason for caring, okay? We have to connect that in order to make this brand stick. So what motivates people, all right? Here's information we know as advocates of consumer behavior because in the advertising world, this is what we do for a living. Our job is to go out there and understand what people are all about. So here's some interesting top-line statistics on what people care about in this day and age. What is motivating people? And we see more and more and more people are, and by the way, this has only become more important since the pandemic. When you see some of these things are going to be, oh, my goodness gracious, this is true. This is really what it is, okay? So people are really now into doing things where they have a sense of involvement. And this is why you see such a growth in areas like do-it-yourself, okay? And it's why places like Michael's is very successful, and the hobby store are very popular because people like to be involved. In different times, people didn't mind being spectators in their own lives. But in this day and age, people really want to be a part of what's going on, and they express that, that they want to have new experiences, and they want to have more sensation, and they're interested in trying new things. And that's why you start seeing things like people literally going on vacations where they'll go to vineyards, and not only will they do wine tasting, but they'll learn how the wine is made and where the grapes come from. They're much more immersive types of experiences, and that's an important driver of what motivates people. Another thing that people are looking for is more authenticity, all right? You could argue that the theme world is maxed out, you know, and I live in the middle of theme world. Now, I'm not saying that it's ever going to go away, but more and more, people are looking for genuine, authentic experiences that are actually more inclusive, and they want to do things that are better for self-discovery and self-invention. And I know that word "self-invention" sounds a little bit like, you know, Brad, what are you, are you like a yoga guy? And the answer is I'm not. But people are. But people are on a quest for discovery and these are things that matter to people in this day and age, all right? And then the other one that's interesting is people are looking for more simplicity in their lives. Our, our, our worlds have gotten excruciatingly complicated. And you could even argue in this day and age, it's overwhelmingly so. And we're seeing a lot of the, of the blowback from that. But one of the things that people looking for, are looking for is just how to chill it down a little bit, okay? And this explains the success of farmers markets and things of that nature. So the idea of just kind of easing it down a little bit is something that people desire, all right? And I, and I, and I, I point that out to you on, on purpose because in a moment, I'm going to show you how this connects. And, and, and that's hopefully where the light bulb is going to go off for us. But before we go into that, let's just get into the brand positioning a little bit and just talk a little bit about what this needs to do, okay? Because positioning is kind of a weird term for some people. But again, it, it is a foundation, it's the, it's the, it's the, it's the base upon which we're going to build things. Whenever possible, you want to be perceived as different. It doesn't mean you always are, okay? But if you can create the perception of differentiation, that's really what it's about. You want to be relevant and meaningful to your audiences. You want to be simple, 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 okay? Because you don't have a lot of time to explain. Sometimes you, you have a nanosecond. So, so, uh, like I'd said earlier, when I, when I was talking about the funnel, a lot of what this is, is getting it down to like one or two or three words, literally. That becomes your base, all right? And then again, you want to make sure that you're credible and attainable. You want to be aspirational, which means you want people to desire to be a part of this. But you don't want to be so aspirational that people just say, oh, I'll never get there and give up. So you have to be within the realm of, of attainment for them. These are some of the things that make for a good position. And I put this out on purpose because when you look at what we've got, you want to make sure it holds up against these types of, of indicators as we go forward. So the last thing we're going to do is we're going to organize all these things into little buckets for you, okay? What do we think are things that are going to drive this brand? And what you have here on the column on the left are what we consider to be the drivers. The authenticity, the location, the love of community. These are things that are very important and, and, and need to be part of the DNA of the brand. Things that are essential, that need to be in the communications, but perhaps aren't the drivers per se. Is all the beauty of the lakes and the parks and the things you can do, the accessibility, those types of notions. They're important because they're part of what it is, but they're probably not drivers. And then things that, that a lot of people think are important and they need to be in there, but they're not drivers, okay? And that is, you know, the current state of affairs, okay? You have a lovely convention center and it's really cool, all right? But it's probably going to change over time, so it's not the focus, okay? We don't have an Eiffel Tower in St. Cloud that's going to be the centerpiece of, of the community. So your product mix, the restaurant mix, the things of that nature, we know that that's all in flux and change. So that needs to be a part of it, but it's probably not something we're going to, we're going to emphasize uh, when it comes to the actual core brand itself. And then issues like, of course, I'm not going to, again, dwell upon this, but that up and down communication and making sure that everybody feels like a part of it. Um, the, the notion that maybe it's getting a little crowded. These are things that we don't want to lose sight of as we go forward because they can get in the way of a strong brand if we're not careful. Okay, so that shows you a little bit of the priority. And so we'll, we're really kind of focusing it down into these themes, okay? Location, the neighborliness, the rural beauty, and we're going to show you how that plays out. The humanity of this neighborhood, the genuineness, these are key words. And while you might not see this in the positioning, we will start seeing this in the advertising and you will start seeing these kind of words as we begin to, to express the, uh, the, the overall thought of the, of the community. So looking at the pillars, we really want to, we want to make sure community is front and center, okay? It was said to us by so many people that we don't want to lose sight of this. The people that live in the, in the community and the community itself are, are a central theme that will not get lost. The natural beauty of the region and the area has got to be a part of the mix. And this is very important that we believe this and that we adopt it because this could easily get bulldozed, you know? And, and I use that word on purpose because I'm watching it happen in Orlando. Um, you know, we're not making enough room for the natural beauty and once that stuff's gone, it's gone forever. So, you know, let's learn our lessons and, and I'm not being hard on, on Orlando. I love, I love it there, but I, I think they probably could have done a better job when it came to their, their conservation efforts and what have you. And you have all that natural beauty. And then this location, I mean, with, right in the center of, of central Florida, um, you know, with, with a, with a major airport right next door, with the beaches real nearby, with that turnpike running right up in the middle. That location becomes a huge opportunity for you that a lot of other places just flat out can't own. Now, look, here's where it gets fun. Check this out. We, I showed you those slides on motivation that we got from consumer behavior, all right? People want a sense of participating. Well, look at that sense of participating. We've got a communicate, a community where people love the idea of being involved. You can start to see the connective tissue here between your reason for being and people's reason for caring. Authenticity and simplicity. We've got natural beauty, we've got open spaces. These are all lining up. You can start to see how we can build a brand around your, 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 your natural elements and what people are desiring. And the idea that you have experiences that enrich people, well, the idea that now people can get there, they can fly into your air, to our airport, they can drive into your communities, you know, we can, we, we can be a place where people can come and actually have these experiences. This becomes very powerful, very, very powerful indeed. And the nice thing about it is you can actually, once you own those three pillars, you can actually start learning how you can talk about your community. So the people in your town are going to have things that matter more to them, okay? So they're, the community might be more important to them than the location. So they talk more about things that matter to them. Business leaders might want to talk more about its location because it's so excellent for attracting other businesses because of the, of the, of, of the transportation, because of the, the, the turnpike, because of the airport, because of its centrality. Leadership might want to have a, a conversation about something else. And so each and every one of the important groups can, can emphasize any one of these pillars, large or small. And, and, and the beauty of this, of this architecture is with three central thoughts, every stakeholder can take ownership of, of the brand and communicate it to themselves and to the outside world however they see fit. So we're not, we're, we're focusing people into a, into a core idea, but we're also giving them permission to be, to tell the story in the way that is most important to them. When we shared this with your, your leadership in an earlier meeting, I sensed that we had some excitement because we're not forcing people into a story. We're giving them a platform to embellish the story that serves their purposes. And from a strategic standpoint, that's a really strong and good thing to have, okay? So let's take a look at what we're talking about when we take those three core ideas and break them down. Basically, we're talking about owning that location and then taking community and, and, and conveying it in the term of hometown pride, okay? And then moving away from rural beauty because we, we met some resistance with the term rural and just own authentic in nature. And authentic becomes very important because we know that's something that matters to people. So community becomes hometown, hometown pride. Um, geography or location becomes being in the center of things. And then all of the beauty becomes authentic in nature. And these become the terms that we actually use strategically. And it starts to look something like this when you break it out. You know, you start looking at your geographic location and you could, you can literally, i- i- if you perceive yourself as the center of the universe, and why not, okay? Look how close we are to Disney, look how close we are to the city of Orlando, look how close we are to Medical City, look how close we are to Cape Canaveral, look how close, you know? Suddenly, perceptually, you're right in the middle of things. That becomes a really compelling beginning of a story. Similarly, when you talk about hometown pride, interestingly enough, this is a sentiment that everybody can identify with and it doesn't matter where you're from. I happen to have been, were born and raised in the northern part of New Jersey. And I grew up in a little teeny town that wasn't as rural as St. Cloud. Um, but it was pretty open, pretty, pretty open space, a little town called River Edge in the northern part of, of, uh, of Bergen County. And I had so much pride, pride growing up, that was the only town that mattered to me. So hometown pride is a sentiment that everybody understands and we can take that, and here's what's cool about it. You guys already have it. I mean, with your Christmas parades, the, the list goes on and on and on of all the things you're already doing. All we want to do now is take that sentiment and bottle it and package it and make it part of our brand and make it a core, a core value. And then again, um, this happens to be so important to me, but I also think it's important to you, is let's not forget how gorgeous it is. And, and, and if you live here, I, I can see how you might be able to take that for granted at a time. But I'll tell you one time, every single time I came out to St. Cloud, I had this decompression that happened when I got off of the turnpike. It was like, oof, wow, I'm actually someplace that's really beautiful, right? So let's not lose that. Instead of losing it, let's own it. Let's make it a core pillar of our brand. And, and, and that, that goes really into business decisions down the road, okay? So, you know, if somebody comes in and says, we're going to build the largest factory and we're going to make you, we're going to employ the whole town and, oh, that factory is a rendering plant. Well, no, we're not going to do that because it's going to destroy all the natural beauty, okay? So the brand becomes a, 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 basically a filter through which we will grow and, and we will attract people to St. Cloud who share these values, okay? So you won't have to worry about getting people that are just interested in scraping and building, you know? There's going to be people that are interested in preserving and enhancing. It'll change, it'll change the conversation. So that's what happens. And, and then the last part is, um, it's not just authentic in nature, it's also authentic in people. Um, you know, the folks in, in St. Cloud struck me as being really down to earth. Uh, and, and I didn't get, there, there wasn't a lot of nonsense, they were just telling us how it is. So that's another, uh, another plus that goes with it. So when you, when you take this, these become the, the core values. And, and so we, what we did is we, we actually just put together just a little bit of an audio scape um, to try to dimensionalize how this might sound. This is not intended to be an advertisement, okay? But it isn't intended to be a mood piece. So I'm going to play this little piece for you and if you, if you just, if you would, just either, just kind of close your eyes and listen and tell me if it sounds like it fits for St. Cloud, okay? Because if it does, then I, then I know where we are and, and we're, and we'll be ready to rock and roll.
Whether St. Cloud is your hometown, where life led you, or a home for your business, one thing is certain, it's at the center of it all. With theme parks, major metropolitan areas, and rapidly expanding cities surrounding its borders, St. Cloud is the heart of central Florida. And it's that heart that makes it like no other place. From the moment you enter our city limits, you are enveloped in hometown pride. Festivals and events fill the picturesque lakefront and historic downtown streets, inspiring a tradition of close knit connections and community. That sense of togetherness can be found in every corner of our city, remaining true to the authentic nature and spirit of life in St. Cloud in the midst of growth and new opportunities. For businesses looking to put down roots, St. Cloud means a prime location with the resources and amenities needed to drive through. Here, established businesses share walls with up and comers and value community over competition. It's just our nature. For a young family, it means a safe neighborhood and big parks for growing kids to play. Close enough to everything yet tucked away. It's where your heart can call home.
So you can see that, that if you just take those three central thoughts, already you can begin to tell a very interesting story that sets the table to tell other stories about St. Cloud, about the city of St. Cloud. So that becomes basically your platform. And we want to make sure that, you know, um, what we, what we're asking today is for you folks to bless it and say, yeah, this sounds like it's right for us. Please go forward and, and, and bring this brand to life for us because that would, that's what the next, the next step would be for us. But the other part of it is, um, just a reminder, um, this, you know, this is not a cosmetic exercise. This isn't just us going out there and doing fancy stuff. This brand also has to be integrated back into the community. So, um, I think, um, some of our marketing efforts have to be internal marketing efforts as well. When we build this plan, when, when we get to the next stage, which will be, will be the visual identity and, and we will have a tagline and we'll have a new look and feel, um, we should take the time necessary to get everybody inside of St. Cloud on page with this and create those feedback loops and get everybody excited and then go external, okay? Because this really is a, i- i- it's not just a, something that you, you, you send off to the marketing department. This is not Mary Emma's responsibility, it's all of ours responsibility because the brand belongs to the community. So if, if we believe that and, and, and you, and you, and you, and you buy into that, then we're, you've got an amazing platform here. I think we're going to do, do real wonderful things. But you, you just need to understand that this is more than just a marketing thing, okay? Um, so I think that's it. And, and so next steps basically is, um, we, you know, with your blessing, we want to move rapidly into building out the, the, the identity. And I'll let Mary Emma speak on more granular detail because she probably has the fact sheet in front of her, I do not. But anyway, that's where we are right now and then I will just be quiet and let everybody else talk. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brad. And thank you so much to the city council.
Thank you, Brad. Council, do you have any questions?
Would anyone have any questions you'd like to ask?
Yes, Mayor, Dave Askew.
Mr. Askew.
Yes, um, Mr. Nix, um, it, I just, I was going to ask, are you going to do a logo? And it obviously showed up in the last part, their logo and color palette. Before we get into the logo, can we, as a designer, um, and as an, I guess, ex-designer, watch, there's a video out there, uh, there was a TED Talk that says, "Why city flags are the worst design thing you've ever noticed by Roman Mars."
Okay.
Uh, can we watch that so we don't have, um, an egg over easy and things like that, so? It, it's actually enlightening, um, you know, it goes over a Chicago flag and a lot of flags similar to our flag. Uh, it could, could do a lot of work, but, um, it's an enlightening 18 minutes. So if you can watch that, I would, I would appreciate it.
Well, I thank you for that, of course. Yes, I, I, I'm a student of branding and I, and I love the opportunities. I appreciate that and I'll make sure that our design team sees it as well.
Yeah, it's enlightening and it really is.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Councilor Trey.
Thank you. Um, Bradley and your team, I think you guys did a great job. Um, I really liked the pillars that you guys, uh, selected. Um, and then, you know, I just like to keep in mind that it's, it's a brand and not just a logo. So I like the fact that you guys went through all of these steps and, and didn't present anything yet, just presented to, to make sure that we're all on the same page with, um, kind of the voice and the, the personality that we have going on with the, uh, with the brand itself. Um, because, you know, a big part of this is just trying to decide who we are as St. Cloud. Everyone has their own, um, kind of interpretation based on how and where they grew up. But, um, all in all, I think it's, uh, on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
Mr. Muffin, I don't see your face anywhere, but are you wanting to ask a question? Well, I'd certainly like to say I thoroughly enjoyed your presentation. I think it is certainly heading in the right direction. It's obviously that you have done this before and you've certainly, uh, been able to embrace, uh, who our city is and where, where we're going and, um, uh, I'm excited about the journey and I look forward to, uh, hopefully proceeding with this, uh, adventure and this journey together with you.
Thank you.
I think it'll help us with our communication. Uh, because that's certainly something we've always been trying to work on, but it just seems like you never get that down uh, the way that you really ought to. Any other questions?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, sir, if you recall, um, in the council action item number two, if I could request that we move that up and just come to an agreement that the council as a whole agrees with the, the pillars so we can move forward in the next step of the rebranding process.
All we need is just an agreement on this, is this not, this isn't something we need to technically vote on? Can we just have an agreement? Is that correct?
Mr. Sturgeon, I think you're, you're looking for a formal consensus that you're moving in the right direction. That's correct. Thank you. Well, yes, we'd ask for a, a formal vote on it.
Okay. Well, then before I do that, is there anyone online or in the chamber that is requesting to speak to this item? Madam Park?
Mayor, can I, can I make one comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, excuse me. I didn't really hear anything in, in the, I, I mean, I think what you did was great. It's kind of herd and cats, so I think you're moving in a good direction. Um, I would say what seems to spark a lot of anger or a lightning rod around here is anything that says small town life. I, I don't know when you did your, um, sessions, if you picked up on that, that, that seems to be a, a polarizing comment, you know? And I, and I think it's possible that, yeah, we are growing, but we still have like the small town values. I mean, so I just think that had a lot of, um, a lightning rod effect to it. But I didn't really hear anything about veterans. And I mean, that's a lot of our identity is, um, that we're Soldier City and, um, that we're founded by veterans. So I didn't really hear anything on that, but that's, that's my only comment.
Yes, and, and that was addressed and that is part of the larger work session. Um, but it's not something that, that we're determining should be a key pillar of the brand. It definitely had, there's definitely a place in the messaging for that. It definitely had, there's definitely a place in the messaging for that.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the audiences?
We don't have anyone in the audience at this time.
Okay. Then could I have a motion that we move forward with this, uh, branding process? I'll move. We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Well, Mr. Nix, we thank you so much for your presentation and we certainly look forward to, uh, uh, continuing on this journey with you. Do you have anything else to add?
Just thank you very much and I'm excited for you because I think you've got a really cool brand platform now.
Well, thank you very much.
Very good. All right, I'll say goodbye.
All right, goodbye. Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation regarding, uh, our water and update.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Craig. I'm an environmental utilities director. I don't have a formal presentation for this council meeting, but I will for the next one. And we plan to give a presentation every council meeting, uh, on, uh, the status of the water and the pipe cleaning. So, um, the, since, uh, I got here in May and I guess since February, there's been about, I don't just guess, I'd know, since February, there's been eighty pi, eighty miles of pipeline clean. So that's about fifty-seven miles, uh, done with the, um, ice picking and the remainder done with the line slapping. Uh, there was, uh, and what we've been doing is we, we've been listening, we've been responding, we've been testing, and we've been monitoring. So we're continuing with that, we're not done. Uh, we have some slapping that we'll be doing in the middle of September to the end of September. And we're going to continue to do that. Uh, when I got here, the city manager's office and, uh, the mayor, you, the, the council made it clear that, uh, communication is going to be, is, is one, is like the most important thing. Um, be transparent in what we're doing. And so we've increased our communication, which you know for engineers can be, be, uh, a challenge. But we're, we've done, uh, we put, uh, signs out when we're out in the system, not just for the ice picking and the slapping, but anytime we're out in the system. Because, uh, if we have a presence there, we want to make sure that people know what we're doing. Uh, we, uh, have, uh, a new design for our webpage for the subject matter, for the, for the pipe cleaning efforts. And we have been doing the reverse nine-one-one calls before we do this, uh, line slapping or the cleaning. Uh, and then we do follow-up surveys. So we gather the information, we find out who still is having issues and who isn't. Uh, and the complaints, while we're, we're not at zero, they've gone down, um, since, uh, in the last, the last time that we did the slapping, which was June, they went down to about a third of the calls that we were getting, or the complaints that we were getting. So we're going to continue to do that until we get it right, uh, we get it clean. Um, so the next time I will give a little bit more of a visual of the, the pipes that we clean, the areas that we cleaned, also, uh, the, the outreach that we've conducted. And, and we're open to any suggestion. Um, we're also, we're doing some modifications to our interactive voice response program, which is just a customer program to be able to send out content by text and by, and phone calls. Because we found that the reverse nine-one-one, while it's pretty good, it's not as accurate as it could be by using our customer information system database. So we're listening, uh, we, we're continuing to improve and, uh, we, we just want to do everything we can to get this right.
Well, thank you very much. This has certainly been a major concern for our city and certainly for our council. And, uh, communication is a huge issue. You know, what, you know, we're, what we've done, what we're doing is certainly what we plan to do. And, uh, whatever you and, uh, uh, Mary Emma can do together to help communicate to our community that we're on top of this and that we're solving this issue and that, uh, you know, the light's at the end of the tunnel, I think will really help our city tremendously. Do, uh, any of the council members have a question you'd like to ask, uh, Ms. Craig?
Thank you for that update.
Trace?
Uh, I just want to say thank you for that update and I look forward to updates every week, uh, as we progress.
Thank you for your support and the commitment to those citizens, uh, which is what I have. I bought a house here and that sense of community, um, it's really important. Thank you.
And thank you. It's so good to have you on board.
Glad to be here.
At this time, we'll move our, to our next item on our agenda, which is our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the residing officer prior to or as soon, uh, as is practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone in the chamber or online?
Mayor, we don't have anyone in the chambers or anything online.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, last, are there any items that, uh, any of you on the consent agenda council members are wanting to address individually? I don't see any. Um, once again, Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the audience or online to speak to the consent agenda?
No, I do not have anyone in, in the chambers or anyone online.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a clarification on one item?
Yes, you may, Mr. Mazzaras.
Thank you, sir. Item E, which is, uh, Resolution 2020-196R. Just to clarify, the item in your packet, the resolution in your packet identified this as a renewal of a long-term disability, uh, insurance coverage, uh, that the city offers through Metropolitan Life Insurance. This is actually a new policy through Metropolitan Life Insurance and it replaces the, uh, older policy with Lincoln, uh, life. So it's not a renewal with Metropolitan, it's, it's a replacement of the Lincoln life policy with the Metropolitan life policy. And just to clarify the item that was in your agenda.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Um, Councilmember Matheny? You're live, you wanted to speak?
Well, I was waiting to make a motion, sorry.
Well, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second from whom?
Uh, Askew.
And a second from Councilmember Askew for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to, uh, our public hearings on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2020-04. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately thirty-six point twenty-seven acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of Westshore Drive, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 of Florida statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, are you? Want to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Um, if I could, um, ask that the clerk also read the second and third item.
Madam Clerk, will you please do so?
First reading and transmittal for ordinance number 2020-05. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately thirty-six point twenty-seven acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of Westshore Drive, providing for amending of official future land use map of the comprehensive plan following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2020-06. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of R1, single-family dwelling, compatible with low-density residential future land use designation, adopted by ordinance number 2020-05, for approximately thirty-six point twenty-seven acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of Westshore Drive, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, conflicts and effective date.
Thank you. Again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Um, this item, these items have been brought before you a few other times and this request is different than the prior or previous requests that have come before you. The applicant is requesting a hundred and eighty-day extension to submit their application for first reading and final adoption. So this request would be heard sometime between now and on or before February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. And so again, this means that they will schedule a first reading between now and then. We will transmit it to the state and then it would, uh, come back for city council to approve or, or not, um, at a future date on or before February twenty, or twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. So it's wanted to, yeah, so if we, if we could ask the council to, um, have a motion on each item to, um, continue this item for a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and eighty days, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we have any questions regarding that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
Councilmember Cooper. I have a couple of questions. It looks like that this has started almost two years ago. And I believe that, uh, Mr. Sturgeon tells me that this is about the fifth time that we're pushing it down the can, get it further down the road. Um, and now they're asking for a hundred and eighty days. It kind of likes, looks like we're not going to get it done. Or at least if we are going this long for two years and going to know another half a year. It almost seems like to me that we should have just told them, okay, if you want to come into the city, you're going to have to start off at the beginning again and re, repurpose and re, repay for every, every extension or everything that's got to be done again. That was all the charges should be re, restarted again, almost like it started, we didn't do anything two years ago. To me, that's, that's wrong to keep, uh, you know, pushing down the road two and a half years. It seems like it's way too long. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, I, I mean, what Mr. Cooper said is what I had said on the last few times this thing has come. You know, like, gosh, how many times are we going to let them, you know, pull it, push it, move it? You know, kind of take up time on the agenda. I did, for the record, I wanted to say, um, I was contacted by the attorney that represents this development and she explained to me some of the difficulties, um, that they were experiencing. So I ha, I understand a little more why this has taken the path that it's taken. Um, I still think there ought to be some kind of, like, look at our processes moving forward. Um, you know, to kind of streamline this. I know this is kind of, this is the first one I, I recall in my term that has been pushed so many times. But I do understand why they, um, were having the difficulties that they were having. So, um, you know, whenever you're ready, I'll, I'll make a motion to continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
I echo Deputy Mayor Matheny's comments of the, if there's something we can do to the code to, to kind of fix this or it's not just open-ended forever and you can ask for extensions forever and ever. And there's a lot of staff time put into this for each application, once it goes to, to council. And, you know, I just, I just don't want to see that wasted. Um, it's either, you know, move forward or don't. I, I guess I didn't have a conversation with them to see what the, what the challenges were, but, um, I'm fine with the continuance, just let's fix this for next time.
Councilmember Askew?
If you need an echo of three votes, I'm with, um, the rest of council. Um, it seems like a waste of, uh, staff time, so, um, I'm okay with pushing it forward. But can we fix what we need to get fixed?
Well, I'll entertain a motion first and then we'll, uh, encourage the staff maybe to bring some kind of recommendation for us and so that we can remedy this problem. Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah, motion to continue, uh, I think it's 2020-04 to honor before the, um, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one meeting.
Do I have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mayor, I did want to say we had someone sign up for this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kathy Hathaway. She's the applicant. She's available if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask or would she like to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Kathy Hathaway. I appreciate, uh, the council's, uh, indulgence on our, our extensions. We have had some extenuating circumstances and we appreciate very much, uh, this last, uh, opportunity to continue this item, these items. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else requesting to speak to this item?
No, I do not have anyone else.
Thank you very much. Then would you please call the roll on the motion and the second?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to the next item, ordinance number 2020-05. Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to, oh, go ahead.
Stop, ma'am. Does, is there anyone to speak to this item, Madam Clerk?
I only have Ms. Hathaway again as the applicant.
Then I'll entertain a motion or just further discussion.
Motion to continue, uh, 2020-05 to, um, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one or, um, a date before that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to item number three, ordinance number 2020-06. Once again, is there anyone to, to speak to this item, Madam Clerk, other than the applicant?
No, sir, I only have the applicant, Ms. Hathaway.
Thank you. Then I'll have discussion of motion by council.
Motion to approve, uh, 2020-06 to a date, um, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one or a meeting before that date.
And, we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Brings us to item number four. Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2020-23. An ordinance of the city of St. Cloud, amending the city of St. Cloud general employee retirement system, amending section twenty-five military services prior or employment, providing for codification, providing for severability and provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Could you also read item number five?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2020-24. An ordinance of the city of St. Cloud, amending the city of An ordinance of the city of St. Cloud, amending the city of St. Cloud police officers and firefighters retirement system, amending section twenty-six military service prior to employment, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for, of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict with here and within, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who do we have to speak to this item?
Yes, Mayor. May I recognize our HR Director, Ms. Tron?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, council. I'm Mimi Tron, the interim HR Director, and I would like to reference both ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-three, the general retirement system, as well as ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-four for the police officers and firefighters retirement system. Both pension boards would like council to consider an enhancement to their military buyback benefit based on the military benefits at the city of Kissimmee. So, for council to have as much information as possible, I would like to present the information that I currently have. The city of Kissimmee currently offers their military buyback to the police and firefighters pension, but not for their general employees. And in the year twenty fourteen, the ordinance adopted change to the military buyback to increase the number of years needed to be in the program from ten years to fifteen years in order to receive the benefit, and that's what the proposal's for. The, for the retirement multipliers, the city of Kissimmee had a payout of three-point-five percent for their police officers, and they actually changed it and decreased it to three percent in, in twenty fourteen. Their fire went from three-point-two-three percent to three percent, beginning in twenty thirteen. The city of St. Cloud, in comparison, currently has a payout of three-point-seven-five percent for both our fire and police officers. And likewise, for our general employees, the city of Kissimmee offers between two-point-eight to three percent, which is in comparison to the city of St. Cloud, which is, which is a three percent. The general employee pension shows that approximately thirteen employees that would be able to benefit from this ordinance, based on the actuary report that was provided. And if the city is not able to absorb the cost, the members' contribution rate would need to increase by about point-four percent of payroll. For the fire and police officers, our actuarial report shows approximately thirty employees who would benefit from this ordinance with a member contribution rate of a one percent of payroll increase needed, if not absorbed by the city. So, as the pension board's objective for these ordinances is really to show support to our veterans, the non-veteran employees should also be considered as this adoption will have a financial impact to all members if it's not absorbed by the city. So, from an HR perspective, I would, I would like just to share that the employee consensus, the employee census data compiled may be incomplete because all employees were not surveyed, which means the financial impact may be different. So, as there is a fiduciary responsibility towards the employees and our citizens, I'd like to actually defer to Ms. Wendy Colazo for any additional financial comments. I know council's reviewing this information, and I believe the pension attorney and pension actuary is also available if there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions? From Ms. Tron. Ms. Matheny, Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Is there, like, a table comparing the benefits between? I mean, you, you just rattled off a lot of numbers. I didn't know. Is anybody putting a slide up that's going to kind of compare?
Um, we, so both Wendy, our finance director, and I both just received the information late Thursday, so this is the information we're compiling. I can certainly make a chart really quick, but just in comparison, right now, the city of St. Cloud has about a point-two-five percent higher payout rate than the city of Kissimmee for the fire and police. And for general employees, the, there is no buyback for general employees with the city of Kissimmee.
It's point-two-five for the general employees, not police and fire, right? Because it sounded like it was point-seven or point-six-seven for police and fire?
Um, fire, so fire's currently at three, I'm sorry, so currently, as of today, the city of Kissimmee for police is at three percent, so it's a point-seven-five percent difference, I'm sorry. That's as of current date.
Ms. Colazo, would you like to speak?
Good evening, council. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. In conjunction with what Ms. Tron has stated, we are, just like I said, simply requesting that we have the opportunity to provide this data, since it is a lot of information, and give a, a side-by-side comparison, because we do feel that some of the numbers, we have not been or given the opportunity to really vet, and I cannot ethically, right now, at this point, tell you that it's sustainable or not, and we would like to request that opportunity. Also in consideration, remember, we have almost a ten-million-dollar unfunded liability that we have to consider, and with the proposal that if the city doesn't absorb this cost, that it will go to the members, it's something that we'd like to vet and, and review again, you know, because I just want to give you a big picture and, and, and give you all the data so you, the best decision can be made for both the city and the employees.
Are there any questions that the council has for Ms. Colazo at this point?
I have, I have one.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. And, and maybe Ms. Trion or Wendy, you guys aren't the right people. But when, when you say, like, when I had my conversations, it was said that the pension, the pension board had voted on it. When, when you make that kind of statement, or not you personally, but that statement means, like, like, city council made that vote, like, five or six people made that vote? Is that what that means? It doesn't mean that it went to all the police and fire, or it went to all the city employees. It went just to...
That's correct. May I be recognized?
So...
I'm sorry.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Sure.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Deputy Mayor, you, you were finishing a statement. I apologize.
Yeah, I just wonder, I just wonder, you know, like, if, if it had to be where the employees had to absorb this cost, or police and fire union members had to absorb this cost, you know, have, have they had a chance or an opportunity to have any say in that? I just didn't understand the process, I guess.
Correct. So, the pension board is elected by the members. They represent the members. They are a legal entity. It's a public entity, subject to the sunshine law. And all the members would have an opportunity to participate in those meetings and make comment, just like the public would. And as my understanding that, no, that there wasn't a vote taken of the general membership or the fire and police membership to find out if they'd be interested in covering that cost if the city didn't. I also will remind council that both the firefighters and the police officers are covered under a bargaining unit agreement. So, there is also, while this is separate, but there still have a bargaining unit that would help devise that structure, so.
Are there any other couns, questions from council at this point? Madam Clerk, is there any, yeah, Councilmember Trace.
So, so based on the, the limited information that was sent out before, the, the couple of spreadsheets from Foster and Foster, it, it looked to me like there was a fifty-thousand-dollar annual contribution required from the city for the general plan and a hundred-thousand-dollar contribution from the city required for the police and fire plan. Is that, is that correct to cover that, the deficit of those changes?
Ms. Colazo.
Uh, that is the reason, Councilman Trace, that we are asking for the time, because, because we feel that there was not a full census, and I need to vet what, you know, payroll burden at the time, I believe, from what the reports look like, was October twenty nineteen. At this point, they're saying that is a hundred thousand and fifty K as you administer, but I can't vet that just yet, because we've received the data with not enough time for me to review that. There is some assumptions that the actuary has already done. I just, again, have not been able to vet, to give you an answer that that is what the cost is going to be, you know, and, and, and partner with them to, to just verify the, the data. So, listed on the paperwork, yes, that's what they're saying, and they're listing from their, their survey, but with the anomalies that we kind of just found, that the entire census wasn't in there, you know, like, like I said, it's quite a bit of calculations to just review. Haven't had the time, because the data was submitted so late, that we can say that those are good. Like I said, I'm not saying they're good or bad, just haven't, I can't, on paper, that's what it's saying, but I have not vetted that yet.
Okay. If, if those numbers are, are correct, I think that's a small price to pay as a, as a thank you for the military service from our employees. But I'm not comfortable making a decision unless staff is, is comfortable with the, the figures and making sure that they're accurate. So, if that's the case, then, you know, I'd like to, this to be continued until we can verify the accuracy of those, those reports.
Hold that. Madam Clerk, is there, Ms. Councilmember Askew?
Um, I concur with Mr. Trace. I've, I've really never seen something brought in front of us like this, and I am, there's no bigger veteran fan than myself, but this just seemed to come across in a very strange way. I, I'm not getting good answers from the city. I would rather, I would rather table this than to push this forward and try to come up with an answer. The problem with pushing it forward is that we could, the next reading, it could be just a bunch of stuff that we're just even more confused, and then it just fails. I would rather table it, put it out there again, let this breathe and grow, and we can get some good answers from this. I'm just scared about sending this thing forward, and, and then, one, we can't afford it. A hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's not really too bad, but we really don't know. It doesn't look like a lot of people put in for this. There's some missing numbers. I've just never really seen something come across this, and I'm supposed to approve it for our citizens. I just, it's hard for me to wrap my head around it. So, if we can get better numbers, I would be more apt to be more agreeable to, especially some actuals from the city would be a little better.
And if I may, Councilman, I'd like to state for the record here that that hundred thousand and fifty thousand is per year. That's a recurring cost, not a one-time cost, too. So, if we look at the, you know, position of it, just want to note that there, it's not a one-time cost. This is a recurring cost, whether that, that cost fluctuates or not, you know. So, I just want to note that for the record as well, so it's clear.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, I think in my briefing, when I asked you the question, you and I talked about it. It could be as high as maybe two-hundred thousand or more. Is that real, realization it can happen?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may, Council, Mr. Sturgeon.
That statement was made taking into account that the actuary was almost a year old, and then we had determined that the census was not correct, that there are some more veterans in the system. And we've also had some new hired veterans over the last year that need to be considered in that census also. And these are the things we discovered over the last couple of days.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I feel the same, same thought process of Mr. Trace, that we should just roll this thing down until we get it complete and finished. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Cooper. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
Mayor, I have Doug Lozen with Foster and Foster, and I have Claude Campbell that have registered online.
Okay. Would the first gentleman you mentioned like to speak? Is it Doug Lozen?
This is Doug Lozen. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I, I do have video capability as well, if you'd like. Otherwise, I like having to speak. I'm the actuary for both pension boards. And the information that's been relayed tonight is correct regarding the cost. Our estimate, fifty thousand per year for general and a hundred thousand per year for police and fire. I can't really address whether there's missing numbers or not. We, we're the recipients of data. We're, we're given a list. Our belief is that the list is, is largely accurate, even if there may be a handful of people perhaps missing, or new hires that haven't been captured yet. If, if it's not a very large number, the costs we've costed out should be pretty close, but it will change from year to year, because if this benefit passes, you would be capturing new hires coming to the city in the future who have prior military service, up to the three-year maximum. So, on an ongoing basis, I can advise this, the percent of payroll that we show, but let's not talk about dollars, but let's talk about percent of payroll. About point-four percent of payroll for general and almost one percent for police and fire. I think going forward, those are going to be fairly accurate numbers as a percent. You would just multiply it by whatever the future payroll would be, okay? The only reason that I think it would be materially different than the point-four for general and one percent for police and fire is in the future, if you have a much different percentage of your population that has prior military service. But assuming that's fairly stable going forward, you know, X percent of your overall population has prior military service, I think these percents of payroll will be fairly accurate going forward. But I will defer to those collecting data. If they think that there's a material number that are missing, then I'm, I'm happy to rerun the numbers and give you updated results.
Are there any questions that Councilmembers have of Mr. Lozen? Madam Clerk, you said there was someone else to speak to this item?
Actually, I'm sorry, I have two more. I had, I have Claude Campbell at this time.
Claude, are you available to unmute yourself and speak?
I'm here, Mayor.
I'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager. I'm Claude Campbell, Chairman of the St. Cloud Police and Fire Pension Board. About a year and a half ago, the outgoing Police and Fire Chairman brought forward an idea of a military benefit to us. Our board learned that the city Kissimmee and the police and, police and fire had the same benefits, which, which we verified. The city Kissimmee's policy was obtained and sent to city council and the city manager for review. I've met with the city manager, who stated this benefit was, would be a small price to pay for our military. I've also spoken to each of the council members and have received a positive response in support of this ordinance. Before you have the ordinance to benefit the veterans that work for the city of St. Cloud, this benefit will grant each member up to three years of military credit at no cost to the member. The benefit will also continue to give as future employees that are hired to work for the city. This benefit will give the city and the great recruiting tool to hire and retain disciplined employees that have served in any of the great branches of the United States military. The employee will obtain the benefit after serving fifteen years in the city of St. Cloud, therefore targeting the longevity of the dedicated employee. Not only, not only will this benefit help us hire and retain disciplined employees with a strong work ethic, but it also helps us compete for the best and brightest candidates. Over the past twelve months, the city of St. Cloud, police and fire have lost several members to other agencies. With this military ordinance, I believe that the city can retain highly-trained and dedicated personnel. I recognize how some council members would be fearful that a support of the police would have negative effects to the city council. Even though this is a benefit for the police and fire and also a general plan, it's clearly a benefit for the veterans of the United States military. As recruiting quality in employees and retaining them can, can sometimes be a struggle, I kindly ask that you reconsider this ordinance as it is a benefit employees of the city of St. Cloud while promoting retention of skilled veterans of the United States military. Earlier tonight, you decided to move forward with a rebranding of the city. Councilmember Matheny asked why nothing was mentioned about veterans. City of St. Cloud was stunted by veterans, and has been nicknamed the Soldier City. Military veterans are a major pillar to the city of St. Cloud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Madam Clerk, is there someone else to speak?
Yes, I have Michael Sims.
Michael Sims. I recognize you at this time.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Michael Sims. I'm an employee of the city of St. Cloud Fire Department. I just wanted to speak to you tonight about the ordinance, the way the ordinance is currently written. I believe you all know you get up to three years credited time per veteran. At no cost to the veteran. Myself and a couple others had already purchased time when we were hired on or shortly thereafter. One of them has already quit and moved on to another agency, similar to what Mr. Campbell was just mentioning, which maybe this would help to retain those type of personnel. The other falls into the category where he has six or so years of credited The other falls into the category where he has six or so years of credited service. So he would actually get three more years purchased on his behalf, which is an outstanding benefit. It allowed him to purchase some himself and then to still, uh, receive the city benefit if this ordinance were to be passed. In my situation, I had three years of fif- three years and fifteen days of credited service when I was hired on. I purchased my maximum of three years, leaving me fifteen days, uh, lingering. Under this ordinance, I would receive fifteen days of benefit, uh, of credited time. My request would be that I could be reimbursed for the three years that I purchased so that I would be made even with the rest of my fellow veterans. And then I would be held at the same standard, the fifteen years of service and such. The way, excuse me, the way the ordinance is currently written, uh, the pension is not able to do that. I believe maybe it's, um, something legally where they can't make a distribution unless I am retired or I were to quit. And I'm nowhere near retirement and I don't plan on quitting anytime. So that, that kind of eliminates me from the benefit of this ordinance. Uh, I believe this is a, a great ordinance, a great way to say thank you to the veterans. And I'm just requesting that if this were to be done, that, uh, we could find a way to include me in it somehow through the, either the city reimbursing me or if we can work something out with the, the pension where I could be reimbursed for my, uh, my cost that I already incurred, incurred on my own. Uh, I know I did it voluntarily and by no means should the city be responsible for my actions. I just respectfully requesting that I might have the opportunity to get my money back and, uh, and just be purchased outright through the city like everyone else may be. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cooper, are you wanting to speak?
Yes, sir. Um, I don't have any problem with Mr. Sims. I understand what he's saying. And, uh, it, it should be on the same playing field that everybody plays at the same time. Um, I don't, I don't have a problem at all of reimbursement for, you know, the last three years that he has, has put into money. Um, I, I think there's still a lot of, lot of problems that we need to just iron it and straighten it back out a little bit. And once we do that, I, I'm ready to vote for it. Thanks, sir.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else online that, or in the audience that hasn't spoken that wishes to speak to this item?
I do have Edwin Mateo that signed up and registered, but he is not on the line. That's the only other person I had.
He's here. I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Council, Ed Mateo, St. Cloud Police Department. I'd just like to reiterate what, uh, Claude Campbell said. This benefit will not only help us to recruit qualified individuals, but it will also help us to retain qualified individuals.
I would wait to know they were together.
We have lost several people over the last couple of weeks. Um, they come here, they get some experience and they move on to bigger agencies. This benefit would help us to compete with these larger agencies and the, uh, the City of Kissimmee and Osceola Sheriff's Office. So I'm asking that you guys take a, a good, hard look at this and that you consider this benefit for all our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
No, I do not have anyone else.
Thank you. Then we'll have any additional discussion by council. Well, I'd certainly like to say I am incredibly appreciative of our veterans and certainly want to support them. Uh, what I am concerned about are the questions that have been raised about, you know, assuming this and assuming that. Uh, then you have these others who've come up and, you know, we haven't worked out the issue of, you know, the issue that Mr. Sims addressed. It just seems like to me a little more work needs to be put into this and certainly be brought and bring it back later. Uh, I think it would certainly be something we would, uh, support, but we want to have firm numbers and not all of this uncertainty is a big decision. Councilmember Trace?
I just want to echo your comments and I didn't know if we needed, uh, a consensus on the direction about the, uh, the buyback and, and, you know, having, having staff and the actuary look into that. Um, but I'm in agreement with that, um, aspect of it. And then just want to, want to see the, the revised numbers based on, um, you know, just taking a good look at this and making sure that the actuarial, actuarial science is, is right on it and all the numbers are right before we make a final action.
Mr. Menzares, could you help us?
Well, the first point, and Mr. Trace addressed the question I was now, I think staff would like a consensus about whether you would like at least to, for the staff to further investigate the situation that Mr. Sims pointed out to you. Uh, because what happens with all those situations is I don't know whether there are other employees that either still work for the city or are part of the plan, uh, that fall into a similar cate- similar category to him. And so we'd have to look, staff would have to look into what, any reimbursement possibilities there are with that. So if the council would like staff to look into that, we'd ask for some direction on that.
What is the pleasure of the council regarding that?
I would stand, I would stand up, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
I, I agree with what everybody's, I mean, I, I think we all, uh, are very supportive of our Police and Fire and our employees and the veterans, of course, too. And I think we just maybe are a little premature to be having the conversation, um, pending some, some more numbers and, and, um, having everybody have a chance to look at the data. But, um, I know when I had my briefing, I know, um, Ms. Colazo and Mr. Sturgeon just off the cuff threw out five scenarios. You know, what about this? What about that? What about this? So I, I mean, I would fully support them investigating any scenario that they see coming up, you know, because some people didn't turn in their GD two-fourteens or some people, you know, it's just, there was a lot of different scenarios that, um, we kind of just, just in two seconds, they threw out like, what about these? And one of them was where people had already purchased and what would be that procedure. So I, I mean, I, I think maybe we're just a little premature to have the conversation and I would support, um, them fully evaluating the proposals.
Councilmember Cooper?
Mr. Menzares, I would, I would, uh, concur with her. There's Matheny, so you got two.
Councilmember Rescue?
Um, I'll, I'll tell you, I'm okay with the ordinance. It just needs to be cleaned up. That's the, there's just too many weird numbers in there. And especially some of the calls we got tonight, I want to make sure everyone's taken care of. So, um, I'm good with waiting or getting this cleaned up.
Mr. Menzares?
Well, there's another suggestion on how you could handle this. Obviously, the, as I understand, and maybe Ms. Colazo can confirm this, the additional contribution that's being talked about is not currently part of a budgeted item. Obviously, it's not because it's moving forward. As you go through the budget process coming up, you could look into that. Staff could get a better information, get some better numbers as to the, uh, the cost. And then you could move through the budget process and look at some of these issues at the same time. It would seem appropriate that you decide whether you want to budget the money first before you approve the ordinance that requires the payment.
So would that consist of putting a placeholder in the budget?
Yes, sir.
I assume that would have to be a line two hundred thousand dollars if we did that then, from what I'm hearing here. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I am, I'd make a motion if we go ahead and accept, uh, put two, two hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
Okay, I assume you're making a motion that we put a two hundred thousand dollar placeholder in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Two more information can be brought back to us?
And yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Let me make sure that, uh, there's no more questions or discussion that's needed on this at this point. Do we understand what the motion is? Ms. Colazo, are you wanting to speak?
I know, sir, but if you are, uh, addressing, I would, uh, I need clarification on that. You are saying, for me to understand, you want a placeholder of roughly two hundred thousand dollars? And could I receive direction? What happens if it's more, less? Are we putting it in? Because I only have till September ninth to balance this budget and make all those changes. So I just want to be very clear what you want me to do because the request was to vet the numbers, but now we're actually physically allocating money. So if you can clear that for me, that would be great.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I, you can approve a budget tonight. Mr. Cooper's motion can't be, can't approve the budget item because that has a different process you have to go through. So I understood it to be basically a, a direction to staff to find a place, find some money to put in there to, to deal with this situation and what the ultimate number in the sta- the City Council will work out during the budget, the final budget process. It may be more than, maybe two hundred thousand, it may be more than two hundred thousand, based on they think. That's what I understand Mr. Cooper's motion to be.
That would be correct. Now, I ha- I don't have a problem with that. Thank you, Mr. Menzares.
I think we have a problem if we don't know what the number is. Mr. Trace, Councilmember Trace?
I was just gonna try to get clarification on the motion, but I think, uh, we've already accomplished that.
Okay, so, uh, I need to know if that motion is in order or not, Mr. Menzares.
Well, I think it is, Mayor, because it's, again, you can't take final action to add, uh, to approve anything in the budget tonight. So really, it's a formal direction from the City Council to staff to work on this issue and to put in the number, to put in a number and the number two hundred thousand dollars was put out there. But obviously, that number is going to be, going to be governed by the research and the analysis that's done between now and the final budget approval.
And do we need to formally, um, postpone the vote for this, this first reading of the two ordinances?
Yes, it's, you know, this, this was, uh, truthfully, and the, the way this process works is the, the, your pension boards are given the authority to move forward with recommendations to change the pensions plan and they send it forward. Uh, and that's what happened here. Um, really, the ordinance approves a benefit that you should really approve the, the budget amount for that benefit before you approve the benefit. Because then what you've basically done is if you approve the ordinance that says you're going to provide this benefit, now you've basically committed the budget amount because you've got to find the money to satisfy the ordinance that you approved. So we kind of did a little bit backwards, so it's really probably better to do it this way. If you put it in the budget and then later on the council decides, it doesn't seem like that's the direction, but later on the council decides they do not want to adopt the ordinance, then it just becomes unused money in your budget.
Okay.
So you don't really need to do anything, I don't think, on the ordinance that's before you, uh, especially since it's first reading at this point, either one of them. You just move it forward and we get back with more information, uh, as this council moves through the budget process.
Well, the motion that Mr. Cooper has presented, is that something we need to vote on or are you just looking, we need a consensus on?
I think he did, he made us a formal motion, so I think you should vote on it, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody else need clarification?
What's the motion? Uh, the motion again?
Again, my, my understanding is that the motion would be that staff put in a, a, a placeholder to fund this legislative prior, uh, provision if it is approved and that the, the, basically the ballpark figure would be two hundred thousand dollars, but that would also be directed by what staff's research shows. Again, it'll be just a placeholder.
That's, that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on this motion?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny? Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Now, what do I need to do with these two, uh, ordinances, Mr. Menzares?
Well, they're here for introduction. Based on the discussion of the council, I think we, staff would just withdraw them. And then we'll bring them back after there's more information for first reading and then final adoption.
So we're withdrawing ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-three and twenty twenty dash twenty-four. Staff is withdrawing those motion?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Yes, I would request we withdraw those two ordinances, um, per direction of the council to do more research, place a placeholder of two hundred thousand dollars into the, for, for final, final budget recommendation or whatever number comes up after the research, so.
All right. Mr. Menzares, does that not need to be voted on, does it?
It does not, sir. We can.
All right, thank you. That brings us to item number six. Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution twenty twenty one ninety-one R?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash one ninety-one R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amendment resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one sixty-nine R, which adopted the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget for the City of St. Cloud. Finding the City Manager has certified their prior year fund balances and our current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not included in the original two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include certain additional fundings in the various funds, making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Thank you.
I recognize the Finance Director, Mayor.
Please do so, Ms. Colazo.
Ms. Colazo.
Good evening, uh, uh, Mayor and, uh, Council, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Uh, this is the presentation for Budget Amendment Number Five for Fiscal Year, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, obviously, the background through Code Section two dash two two twelve, uh, amendments after the adoption of the fiscal year. This is certification that there's, uh, available appropriation, revenue in excess of those estimated in the budget of the City, Council by this resolution will make the, um, supplemental appropriation. The City Manager certifies that these funds are available and appropriate to fund and that this budget amendment meets the City's strategic plan goals for financial sustainability. Um, in your first item, Budget Amendment Number Five, in the General Fund, we have a net increase of fifty thousand dollars. Item, um, items compiling that is using prior year fund balance for the, in the federal equitable funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Requesting permission to release these funds per Resolution twenty twenty one seventy-four R. Um, this will be used, um, and increase the expenditure for PS zero seven oh six in the machinery and equipment category for project num- for that project number stated, PS oh seven oh six. Uh, the federal equitable funds for K nine purchases as well as, uh, maps and operational supplies in the support of the, uh, in conjunction with the K nine purchase. The second, um, uh, item in the, uh, General Fund will be to, uh, decrease city, city council contingency by two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, this is for the, for funding the council chamber remodel for the system upgrades that are needed and also additional equipment. This is being allocated into budget, um, excuse me, project number Bravo Mike two thousand one or in layman's terms BM two thousand one for the quantity of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In the one percent surcharge, there's a zero net increase. Uh, what we're, uh, using is a contingency in the future capital purchases of eighty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand of those will be to, it's the expense for the information technology and equipment and machinery category. This is for a vehicle replacement, um, for the, for the IT director. The second item, fifty thousand dollars of in- increase to the expense in information technology and the equipment machinery category for the Seventeenth Street Distribution Room Power Generation. At any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. And finally, on, in the Water Impact Fee Fund, a zero net increase. This is, um, decreasing water impact fee contingencies for one million three hundred thousand. Um, and this is to increase, um, and fund the project WA twenty-one oh eight for one million three hundred for the Cypress Lake Project. These are all the items for the Budget Amendment Number Five. Staff recommendation is approval of the Resolution twenty twenty one ninety-one R. And I am open for any questions, um, for Budget Amendment Number Five that you may have.
You're muted, Mayor. Mayor, you're muted?
I didn't know I'm touching. I'm sorry, thank you. Is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
Mayor, we do not have anyone in the chamber. Mayor, we do not have anyone in the chamber or online for this item.
Then we'll open up for discussion and/or motion by council. Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Trace?
I just have a comment on the, the council chamber remodel. I thought this was two hundred thousand dollars the first time we talked about it, and then I was sent a estimated budget of two hundred twenty-five thousand. And we're making a budget amendment for two hundred seventy-five thousand, so I just wanted some clarification on that.
Clarification, uh, excuse me, clarification, uh, Councilmember Trace, that I had was that some information technology costs that needed to be added into those estimates for the chamber remodel were not in there originally, and this is the total cost adding that, that estimate.
Okay. And then have we toured other facilities to see what other cities have done, what works and what doesn't, just to make sure that, like, as with any project that we have that we're doing, what is kind of the, the best practice?
If, if I could answer that, Mayor, no, we have not, nor we did have a committee that looked at this probably eight or nine months ago, from cross-section of people in, in, in the city staff, to make sure, you know, we're using the right technology. And we've had enough experience in different organizations and what we like and don't like. I actually did send you the plans to see, for the hard part of the diocese redesign.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Could I entertain a motion then? I would like to make a motion for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty dash one ninety-one R. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to Council Action Item Number One. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I mean, will you please read the item?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash one seventy-four R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the release of funds from the St. Cloud Police Department Federal Equitable Funds to purchase one canine dog and operational equipment.
Thank you. Who will be speaking that item, Mr. Gauntlet?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Mr. City Manager and Council. Specifically, we've had to retire one of our canine units, and we will be in the process of using our federal seizure dollars. These are the funds that we commonly work with our money laundering task force. So we're excited about the prospect of bringing a new dog onboard. In addition to some operational equipment for the dog, we anticipate the purchase of a specialized mapping program, which will help our school resource officers and our staff when responding to any kind of an incident at any one of our schools. And this gives us a schematic of the schools and an interactive opportunity for rapid response, knowing the size of these schools now. For example, the size of the high school and multiple large buildings will know the layout extensively by the, by the development of these interactive mapping systems that will have, that'll be available to all of our staff. So thank you much for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions you'd like to ask Mr. Gauntlet? Councilmember Matheny?
Uh, I, I was gonna make a motion if no one had come.
Well, we'll do that in a minute. Is there anyone in the chamber or online that has requested to speak, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I have no one online or in person.
Then, Councilmember Matheny, you may make your motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We come to item number two. Do we need to act on this any further?
You already took action on that, Mayor.
That's what I thought. So we will move to our distinguished attorney, Mr. Manzares.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one, actually, two quick items, one item, just more of an informational item. On next, on August twenty-seventh, we have a planned Stevens Dependence Special District meeting, which will be held, is planned to be held virtually right now. We also, prior to that meeting, the collective bargaining negotiation team would like to have a closed session collective bargaining meeting with the city council related to the upcoming negotiations for the police, with the police collective bargaining unit. That meeting is, will schedule, start that meeting at five thirty. The VSD meeting is at six. We think we should be able to just get through it pretty quickly. It's an informational meeting only, just for, so, so that everybody's aware. Because it's a closed session, and there will be two different meetings, you will get two different virtual sign-ons, one for the five thirty meeting, and then a separate one for the six o'clock meeting. So we'll, of course, remind you of that before August twenty-seventh, but I just wanted to give you a heads up tonight. Thank you, Mayor, until then.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sturgeon, our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being rec. It's that time of year again for the city manager and the city attorney and our lobbyists to be evaluated. Last year, I was directed by council to look at a new methodology. I've adopted the ICMA recommended written, written evaluation form, and I will be sending that to you. I went and looked at the city of Kissimmee, they actually meet in a conference room with the city manager and share their comments collectively. It is still a public meeting, will require, be called to the public, and they would be allowed to attend. But I would request that we do a private one-on-one before that session occurs, and then do a, a group session for myself. I don't know what Mr. Manzares would like to do, but if we could follow the same format with him, that'd be very nice. And then our lobbyists, I've already speak, spoke to them, we'll continue with our October meeting, and they'll come in and do a presentation on their activities over the last year. And then also, I spoke to Chris Carmody about our lobbying for next year. As you know, session starts in March. So I'll ask council to start thinking about projects and things we want to push forward through the legislature next year. And we were successful in one of our asks this year. I think we would have been successful in more, if it weren't for the pandemic. But I just wanted some feedback on, on the city manager, city attorney evaluation. Dan, did you have anything to add?
Mr. Manzares?
Uh, no, sir, I know. We, we, to make it here, we'll follow whatever process the council decides to handle with the city manager is fine with us.
Well, it certainly seems to me what you propose is would certainly be effective and acceptable, certainly to me. How about the rest of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cooper.
Do we have a consensus? Councilmember Trace?
Thank you.
Yep, I'm good.
Thank you very much. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Councilmember Cooper?
Yes, sir. You're on my time. Okay. Mr. Sturgeon, what can you tell me about St. Cloud or downtown, where sound system that we were gonna have several months back ago?
Well, we actually went out to bid, and then we didn't have any qualified bidders. And then we canceled one of the bids because they couldn't do what we asked them to do. So I will see if Les, I don't know if Leslie's on to get more, but we are continuing to try to find a vendor that can do that work. Officially, it's not a big enough job. It's hard to find somebody to do it, but we're continuing to press ahead.
Do you, do we know who did for Kissimmee? Got that?
Like I said, we, we put it out for bid, and, and unqualified bidders, and then the one we did couldn't perform what we asked. So it's, it's frustrating, and we'll continue to look for somebody.
Okay. Well, the question was, could you just make a phone call to somebody or Kissimmee and find out where they got it, what they, you know, if it was still in business, or whatever we could do.
I, I, I got your question, yes, sir. We will, we will follow up with somebody in Kissimmee and find out who did their work.
Okay. Well, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. To kind of follow Mr. Cooper's comment, I don't know how old the city of Kissimmee's sound system is, so I'm not sure that that's the best model, but I'm sure you can find a community around. Or maybe once Pennsylvania is, is up for a sound system, maybe that becomes a large enough project that, that gets some interest. I have two, I have two items. The first one I'm gonna talk about is the Transition House. So I don't know how many of you know, but Mr. Tom Griffin has retired. And so now the new CEO of the Transition House is an amazing young lady named Melissa Lucas. And I had the opportunity to meet with her this week, with the city manager as well, to discuss the Transition House and programs that they have. To preface this, I also don't know how many of you know, but Community Vision has sunsetted. You know, it was decided by the current board that basically, you know, a lot of different, when, when Donna Sines came up with Community Vision twenty-five years ago, it was a groundbreaking program that she put together. Nobody had it, nobody was doing the work. Well, you know, you fast forward twenty-five years, it was a lot of different agencies and entities doing similar type work, and it kind of seemed like competing for dollars, you know, became more of a struggle. So, you know, it was a very tough decision, but it was decided that Community Vision was going to, you know, end its run. And the parts and pieces of Community Vision have gone out to different organizations in the community. They didn't go away, but they, you know, the Kissimmee Chamber took a piece of it. The Transition House took the education piece that Community Vision had. So we met with Ms. Lucas and kind of talked about the Transition House. And honestly, I didn't realize all the things that the Transition House provides, but they're picking up, they're taking one of the staff members from Community Vision, whose, whose main job was like outreach and trying to like make people be successful in their, in their journey moving forward. So I just wanted to tell you a couple statistics about Community Vision, and they do a lot of work with veterans. I thought it was mostly mental and, mental health and substance abuse, but they also do a ton of work with veterans. And so she gave me some bullet points here. So they work, they provide an array of vocational and educational programmings for our veterans. They teach the clients new skills and tools they can use to obtain gainful employment and independent living. They have a long-standing partnership with Home Builders Institute to provide training in construction, welding, plumbing, handyman services, and electrical tracks. These courses come with OSHA certifications, and they try to focus on industries that, that, you know, they can have a livable wage. So kind of circling back to Community Vision, sunsetting, you know, in our last budget, we had twenty-five thousand dollars that we provided to Community Vision to use for St. Cloud residents, to provide them education. And, you know, we thought that was amazing, amazing program for us. And I was wanting to ask council if you would agree to reallocating that twenty-five thousand dollars to the Transition House so that they could use in their veterans programs. Another issue she told me was a challenge is that, you know, when they complete these trades jobs, they are expected to purchase their own tools and equipment. And so sometimes that's a stumbling block, you know, they've got the training, they've got the job, but they have to have the tools, and they don't have the funds. You know, maybe we could help subsidize some of the purchase of the, the tools. But I would love if we could be able to, you know, if everybody's okay with it, use that twenty-five thousand dollars and, and move it over to the Transition House to use for their vocational programs.
Mayor?
You're muted.
I'm sorry. Mr. Manzares, could you, with some wisdom on how, how we could move forward on that recommendation if we decide to do so?
Well, at, at this point, I'd ask for sort of consensus of how the council wants to do it, and we'd have to, first I'm hearing about it, so we'd have to look into where the approval was for the money that went to the community.
It's in the next, it's for next fiscal year, the budget that we're getting ready to approve. I just want to change it from Community Vision to Transition House.
Okay, so then you just want to give directions to the city manager and the finance director to make that change, and then you could prove it as part of the budget. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I would certainly support that. It's Transition House has done an amazing job and continues to do so. Mr. Griffin was a great leader, and I look forward to getting to know the, the new director there. I would certainly support that. Mr. Askew?
Knowing that I sit on the board, I would definitely hundred percent support that.
We got three.
Mayor, I don't have a problem.
All right.
Okay, my second item. So I was contacted by a resident in Tika Village, and I get a phone call, and she's, she called me and wanted to know about the status of the wall, and was the wall being built, and, you know, had to ask a few questions, like what wall? Who's building a wall? So it turns out when the Turnpike came and had a public meeting for the, for the widening plans of the Turnpike, they told Tika Village that there would be a sound wall. That, that's what the resident is telling me, that, that there would be a sound wall. So I reached out to Dewberry, who's the engineer for the project, and I got a graphic that I'm gonna put up, ask if they'll put up on the screen. Oh, my screen went away. Can you zoom into Tika Village a little bit? No? I'm sorry, I don't think I can do that at this time. Yeah, it's very hard to see. So Tika Village can, I mean, I can't, I can't touch the screen, right? Like, so can somebody point out where Tika Village is? Because it's really tiny. So does everyone know where Tika Village is? You'll see, there's a label on it, but it's, I don't know, to the left of center? If everybody can see Tika Village? It's unfortunate it's so zoomed out, but you'll see on this map maybe that there's a, a pink line. Yeah, they're circling it. So can you point out there's a pink line between Tika Village and the Turnpike? And if you could see the legend on this map, it's, it's a proposed sound wall. It's proposed. It's not approved. It's just a line on a piece of paper. This is basically like thirty percent plans. And they don't have the height of the wall figured out. They said it could be between eight and fourteen feet. You know, so, but at least they're showing a wall along Tika Village. And if you can see this more clearly, there's a lane that comes off of the Turnpike and comes really close to Tika Village, like a, like a exit lane, comes really close to Tika Village. And then you see where the new Turnpike Road is. It snakes in between, you know, right next to Tika Village and around, and then ties into Nolte. You see that? So there is no sound wall shown, and north is to the right. So there's no sound wall shown on this graphic to the, on the north side of Tika, or, you know, anywhere along that road that, that goes through there. Also, it should be pointed out that the road goes over the Turnpike. So that, that road is gonna be elevated about twenty feet in the air to get over the Turnpike. So the people that are in the north side of Tika Village are gonna have an elevated, not only do they have the Turnpike behind their house, but they're gonna have an elevated road behind their house. So the reason I'm bringing this to council is I would like us to write a letter to the Turnpike, basically advocating for Tika Village and asking for a sound wall, not only on the west side of Tika Village where it's shown conceptually, but also on the parts that are near the, the new, the new Turn- but also on the parts that are near the, the new, the new Turnpike Road in between Teeka Village, and there's a, like a hair salon that's over here, I don't know what it's called. But, you know, that road threads through there, and I would like to see if we could advocate for Teeka to get a sound wall in there. I would like to help draft that letter and possibly if we could get the mayor to sign it, but also if we could reach out to Representative LaRosa and ask him to also help advocate for Teeka Village. You know, Teeka Village has been a great community to the city, and they've always been very supportive to the City of Saint Cloud. I believe they even donated the land that the fire station's on over there. So I, I'm just asking council for support to reach out and try to advocate for Teeka Village and see if everybody supports that idea.
You got several thumbs up, you got three thumbs up, so.
I got three.
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, awesome, and, and I'd like to help craft that letter, and then we'll, we'll go from there, thank you.
I would also recommend you bring Darren Soto into that, I assume, we'll get re-elected, but he would be a super advocate also.
That's great, I'd like to get any, any help that we could get for the community.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, I just want to talk about, real quickly about the historical boards, they haven't been meeting. I'm gonna ask the City Manager if he can, if he can fire those back up possibly in September, and here's the reason why. We've sold the pub, he's moving along, I got a chance to meet with Zachary Parsons, and they're doing a great job on the inside, but they're, they're coming to the CRA for some funds. Then they're gonna have to go to the Historical Board. Right now, the Historical Board is only gonna meet in November, which is gonna push them probably way past New Year by the time this ever gets approved. If we can have the Historical Board meet in September, they end up having a CRA meeting, then they can possibly get done before the first of the year. So I know we're in the middle of pandemic, but I'm sure the Historical Board can meet with Zoom or something like that. I'm just looking for general consensus of the City Council so we can get that fired up.
Well, you got three of us, so.
All right. Good to go, loud and clear, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Trace?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Craig and her staff this week, or last week, I don't remember when it was. Took about a half day toured the wastewater treatment facility and looked at some sanitary infrastructure, just talking through efficiencies and some of the design standards that we have, and how to, how to help implement some better changes to that. So just want to thank her and her staff for that. And then a question for Mr. Sturgeon. When's our next strategic planning session, or when is that typically in the calendar year? I think we, I don't know if we actually like finished up the conversation that we were having last time. I just want to talk through.
Usually it's.
Put that, keep on implementing that plan.
Usually it's.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like to send out a thanks to Stephanie Holcamp and the recreation staff for getting all the wrecked things up and going again. Send in a special thanks to the Shuffleboard Club for being able to get back to using their facilities, but I know it's been a real asset to the community to be able to engage once again in all the different recreation activities with still with the challenges that are before us, but thanks to them. Also received an email from OUC, and if anybody's listening out there and you need help with your utilities, they have one and a half million dollars that is still available for a payment assistance program. And you can go online at OUC and find out how to take advantage of some payment assistance programs that they're offering, I encourage you to do that. There'll also be a back-to-school bash that our city is sponsoring, and people can drive through and pick up school supplies. That will be a Hopkins Park on August the twenty-second from ten AM to twelve PM. And also, again, just thank the city staff for all the work they've done putting into that to try and minister to the community. I was also made aware that a local church by the name Heart of Gold Church is having a drive-through food drive on twenty-seventeen Hickory Tree Road on August the twenty-ninth at ten-thirty AM, and you just drive through and they'll give you a, a significant bag of groceries to help if you need food. That's all that I have at this time. Sure I haven't overlooked anyone. Brings us to our information section, the report section. Thursday, August the twenty-seventh, there'll be a Stevens Plantation Dependence Special District meeting at six PM. Wednesday, September the ninth, there will be a budget public hearing at six PM virtually. Thursday, September the tenth, there'll be a City Council meeting at six-thirty PM. Wednesday, September the twenty-third, there'll be a budget public hearing at six PM virtual also. Thursday, September the twenty-fourth, there will be a City Council meeting at six-thirty PM. Proclamation has been issued in recognition of Constitution Week. We remind the council that warrant list number sixteen, that report is available for your review, as well as the Recreation Advisory Committee minutes from February twenty-twenty has been approved. If there's no other items to come before us, we will adjourn, thank all of the staff for being here, and thank you for all your work and for making this a productive time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.